Good evening to you all. Welcome. Welcome to the Monday, March 12, 2018 regular meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening and would ask that we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk. Ms. Heath?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
And Mr. Snyder is absent for work, travel. Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Farrell, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. So, our first order of business is a proclamation, a very important proclamation regarding Women's History Month here in the city, and I think it's most appropriate that my colleagues, Ms. Hardy and Vice Mayor Connolly, do the honors. And so, I'll start off with Vice Mayor Connolly.
So, Ms. Hardy, I'll read the first part and then I'll... You can read the second part.
That's great.
There we go. Here, do you want to pass that to her then if she doesn't have it? This is a proclamation declaring March 2018 as Women's History Month in the City of Falls Church. Whereas, women from diverse backgrounds have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the City of Falls Church in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, women have been making history in Falls Church since the 1600s and before. And Falls Church has been home to noted abolitionists, educators, and visionaries. And whereas, in 2017, the Falls Church Women's History Walk honored women who made history in Falls Church, including Harriet Foot Turner, a free woman of color who led 12 enslaved people to freedom; Mary Ellen Henderson, a champion for better schools for African-American students; and Alyssa Naff, an immigrant from Lebanon and a leading authority on Arab-American studies in the United States. And? Whereas, the annual Falls Church Women's History Walk will take place on Sunday, March 18, 2018, and will honor 20 women for their contributions to the Falls Church history, including Mildred Pope and Marion Madeline King, who saved the Cherry Hill Farmhouse; and Marion Costner Selby, one of the first African-American students to integrate George Mason High School. And whereas, organizers of the history walk have asked all citizens to carry on the legacy of these women by making a positive difference in the City of Falls Church and the world.
All right. Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as Women's History Month in the City of Falls Church and call on all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, including participating in the Falls Church Women's History Month, March, on Sunday, March 18, 2018. So, thank you, and we look forward to the march, and we thank you both for being some of the key proponents and organizers of the event. So, thank you very much. I don't know if there's anyone here from the community who's... We can do that. Why don't we do that? Why don't we invite all the women in the audience to come forward if you'd like, and we can all get a picture with the Women's History Proclamation. What do you say? All right. Here they come.
Don't worry.
Yeah, I know.
It's worth it. It's worth it.
What do you think? You want to stand up and cheer?
If I need to. All right. Let Nick get a picture and then...
Wait, you can have it.
All right, Nick, sit down.
Huh?
Thank you.
I'm going to have to take mine back.
Okay. All right, just smile nonstop. There we go. Great job.
Can I get one more?
I guess so.
Thank you.
Great job, ladies. All right. One where I'm like, "Ah!" They'll use that in the news.
So, as everybody's sitting down, I just want to read an invitation for everyone in Falls Church, men, women, children, to come to the Women's History Walk. It's going to start right outside at 4:00 Sunday afternoon. There's a public meeting here from 2:00 to 4:00, and then we'll start right at 4:00. It's going to go through Falls Church. It's about a mile, a little more than a mile, and will end at the Tanner Hill Historic Site, right across the street from the new Target. And there's a few businesses along the way that are going to offer specials, and I think there'll be some Girl Scouts possibly selling their last Girl Scout cookies. So, I hope to see you all there.
Okay. And before we continue, I just... Ira was always such a passionate... passionate about the city and cared so much about the city, and he brought so much to the table. Ira had financial expertise and acumen that were invaluable to the city. It's very challenging times after the recession, and he always just fought for what he believed in. We all didn't always agree with things, but his heart was always in the right place, and he was so passionate about his city and making it a better place. He did a lot. He accomplished a lot. The city is better financially and on a better financial footing for his work. He helped get the land that is for the new high school into the city. That was part of the watersale settlement, and he was one of the two council people intimately involved in the negotiations with that. And so, I think in part, we have him to thank for the new school we're undertaking right now. He was always a strong proponent for economic development and helped get the Harris Teeter pushed through to the finish line, as well as the Target Building as well. And so, if we could, maybe we could just take a moment of silence for Ira right now. I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. And if you could keep his wife, Patricia, and his family in your thoughts and prayers as I will be doing, it'd be greatly appreciated. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say before we move on? Okay. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have any oaths of office to administer to the new boards and commission members?
I do. I have two this evening. The first is Keith Bartlett for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Oh, thank you. We're so ready to organize.
All right, yeah. Towards you? Okay, cool. Oh, that's great. That's great.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Keith Bartlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
As an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you.
While we're doing that, or while he's doing that, I just thought I'd mention the next item of business is going to be... Why don't you come on up for us and get our congratulations for your fine... All right. Thank you for your service to our community. We are now moving on to...
Oh, I have another one.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I have William Ackerman for the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation.
All right.
Now, you know what to do, right?
I hope.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, William Ackerman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. The CACT.
Say it again.
The Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. We call it the CACT for a reason. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Still waiting for someone to say, "I state your name." You have a name in the house, though. Haven't got a name. All right. We're now moving on to receipt of public comment. Madam Clerk, will you summarize the written comments?
Erin Tebert from McLean wrote to support the Broad and Washington Project as home for creative cauldron. Christine Connell expressed concern about the BRT bus proposal. Rosalie Cosvelt of 531 Great Falls Street wrote to support fully funding the school budget. Whitney Owen of 209 South Lee Street wrote to support fully funding the school budget. Colleen Rye wrote in support of the school budget, which includes additional mental health resources. Frederick Foss of 119 East Jefferson Street wrote to complain about problems with trash at the North Gate Development. Peter Smeriantopolis provided comments on the West End Economic Development Project.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now going to go on to receipt of public comment. The first item of business is a report from the Library Board of Trustees, the Library Board Annual Report. Welcome. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Oh.
Well, your...
I'm sorry.
Your agenda shows that it's the third item.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, go ahead. Come on up. Come on down. You're the next contestants.
We're so confused.
Bradley Gurnan, 1204 Seton Lane, a nearby neighborhood of yours, Chairman of the Library Board. So, it's a pleasure to be up here again this year and present the report to you. We had a nice intercity partnership this year, and that was the Read and Roll Book Mobile, which we did in conjunction with the police and the schools, and it was successful enough that we'll be doing that again in the coming year. Yet again, we blew through records. We had 36,000 people attend our public programs. I often tell you that public programs are sort of our signature strength. We have a great collection, too, but the programs are what I think people think about us as, and I can see why. At any rate, it's a small building to include 36,000 people for the public programs. I hope you go to some of them so you can see the overflow. We're glad the police chief probably isn't there, or the fire chief to see, but I think it was good in that case. We also broke another record in that we circulated, which is to say we checked out over a half million items this year. That's the first time we've breached the half-million mark, and that's a big deal for a small building such as what we've got. Other libraries that have statistics like these are multi-site libraries, you know, with several buildings, several sites, which leads me to the next item, which was, for the 10th year, we are a star library, as recognized by the Library Journal. Mr. Littenhouse, since this is your first council, this is our 10th year in a row with this. Libraries across the country submit standardized data to the various states and territories, and from that, the Library Journal analyzes all of the factors that would suggest success or not success. And so, we've managed to make the award for 10 years running, but, again, I think is a huge deal considering that we're just a single-site library, one small building. Ironically, though, one of the things that... The big thing for us this year that actually is not mentioned in the report is standing next to me, and that is, we hired our new library director, and we're thrilled with her. Mr. Shields conducted a very comprehensive, and I think, successful nationwide search. We entertained resumes from across the country. We vetted, I think, in the end, something like 18 and whittled down for interviews and things like that, but in the end, we felt that we had the precisely perfect candidate, and we're very pleased that she accepted our offer. So, I believe she is going to talk with you a bit about the project underway.
Yes. And also, I did want to recognize Ed Rose and thank Ed Rose. He was a member of the Library Board for a little over 20 years, so I want to congratulate him on that milestone and also thank him for his service as well. It did not happen in this fiscal year report that we are presenting, so you'll see it again next year when I come before you for fiscal year 2018. So, we last saw you in January, and one of the requests was to have a regular update on the library project and what was happening. So, since that meeting, we've had public outreach meetings and board meetings to confirm and validate our programming, and two themes came out of that. One was public spaces, and the other was the collection. And then, we've also started the Construction Manager at Risk process, and we will be back before council approximately in May for approval of the CIMAR Design Phase contract. The architect and the library consultants are working on a block plan for review by the staff and the board, starting this week, going into April. And then, the board and staff have also started looking at entrance concepts to include either a corner entrance or an entrance that's on Park facing Cherry Hill Park. And just to go over a little bit about council involvement, council will be involved at each... At the end of each design phase, so providing feedback on major design elements. There will also be certain points for approval, such as, I mentioned, the Construction Manager at Risk contract, which will come before you approximately in May-June timeframe. We will also bring regular updates to council on the library project, and we also encourage you to come to public meetings that we will actively be advertising, along with any and all of the Library Board meetings.
All right. Thank you much.
Sure.
It was a very nice presentation, very thorough. Are there any questions folks have? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate you, as I do every year, for breaking new records. It seems to me that with the amount of materials in circulation and the library visits, 380,000, so that breaks down to maybe 900 people per day, 950. I don't know where you put them all. Arguably, many of them are small people, but hopefully they don't all come at once, unless it is, of course, Mr. Chet DeLong, who is on the Board of Directors for the library and also in this audience tonight. He's probably responsible for checking on half the materials himself. I've seen him walk down the street carrying enormous bundles of books.
And, Mr. Z, to that remark, I apologize because last year, you had asked us to look at a piece of data and report to you this time, and I... It slipped my mind, but you had asked last year, of the collection and of the checkouts, what percentage of those were online versus print? And so, I can tell you that of the 500 to 1,000, 6% are eBooks, and then 14% total are some kind of electronic, but the rest is in print.
Awesome.
That includes e-audiobooks and magazines as well.
Thanks for remembering the question. Thank you.
It took a while. Sorry.
All right. Other questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you for the update and the report. I think last time we talked, maybe a couple months ago, we were looking at, actually, the data, and I noticed some anomalies in there. So, I'm glad to see the footnotes in there that actually calls out why we think we see some anomalies in the data. So, while, you know, we broke records on, I think it was, circulation, we actually had decreases in certain areas, which I think I had asked about. I'm a big fan of your program. One thing that I would recommend that we kind of do is also, I think we saw 33% increase or so in programs, but I think it's correlated to the number of programs because you add 300 programs, then you probably get extra visitors, is actually look at what the size of programs. I think it'd be helpful to understand if the demographics involved in the changes in the actual programs that we have and the changes in the people.
The number of people attending the programs?
Yes, because I think, I just did the math really quickly. It was roughly 37 people per program, and that didn't really change over last year versus this year. The reason why you see the increased number of people attending programs is because we added 300 programs. So, that's why your number of attendance actually goes up. So, just a helpful statistic is actually to show number of people. I'm personally a big fan of them. I know my kids are because we spend a lot of our summers there, but I think it'd be helpful to understand as, you know, libraries change and evolve, given that we've talked about how the library renovation won't be done until 2021, so it's a good three years from now, as libraries continue to evolve, their usage, I think, is good to understand the data behind it as well.
So, it ranges from, I would say, the programs that your children are attending, which I usually see them at the early-release Wednesday programs, those are maximum 15, and so those programs can range anywhere from 8 to 15 children. Storytimes can range anywhere from 150 to 200 children and adults, three days a week. Our Mother Goose Rhyme Time has a cap of 16, and we're usually full. That's on Fridays. Teen and adult programs, we see lower attendance, so that can range anywhere from, like, 2 to 20. So, I will say, though, adult programs are gaining popularity, and our most popular one is the ESOL language that happens on Monday nights, a conversation class, and along with all of our book discussion groups, which have a range between 12 and 20.
Yeah. We don't need to go into detail now, but I appreciate it. I think my point was really just to make sure we look at the interplay between statistics. So, while we may see increased visits, it may be a different type of usage than checking out books, for example. People may be coming because of the programming. We may not necessarily see changes in behavior elsewhere, but it's just good to understand the interplay because I think across the country, people are seeing how library usage changes, and I don't think we're immune to that. My second piece of feedback and question is really had to do with city residents versus non-city residents. I know that we saw an uptick in both. Actually, non-city residents actually decreased, it looks like, this past year now that I guess Tyson's Pembroke might have reopened, which I assume we probably got some overflow. I don't know whether we did that analysis, but it'd be good... Interesting to know that whether, because we are such a stellar gem in the community, whether that trend changes if we see the increased residents that we're experiencing in the rest of the population translate also to increased library borrowers as well. And then, my third question was about something we talked about the last time about the library project, which was whether the Library Board or the renovation projects had a chance to discuss the opportunity to actually close the library during renovations to speed it up and actually save money as well. Have you all had further discussions about that?
We have, and we're willing to certainly entertain the idea. I mean, it's... If it makes sense, we'll do it.
Great. I think, I don't want to speak for those in council. I'd love to see what that cost-benefit, the trade-off is, you know, looking at what it would look like if we, you know, did renovation over the course of two years versus closing it for, say, a month and getting a whole bunch done, and how much that saves us versus the inconvenience clearly to our community.
And that those portions will happen during the upcoming design phases, so that's what the architect and the library consultants, and then, once the Construction Manager at Risk is on board, will start doing. So, they're aware of the request by city council, and they're aware that the Library Board is open to how we phase the project, and I believe Kim has talked about that, the two years as a very conservative construction timeline.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I want to congratulate you once again. I'm a big fan of the library and spent a lot of time there, and I know my clients have support vigorous program there. So, anyway, it's great. We really do love the library, so thank you all for your great work. We look forward to hearing more updates.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I think we'll move on to public comment. We have two speakers at the present, and if anyone else would like to speak, you're welcome to. Just please fill out one of the speaker slips and hand it to the clerk. They're in the back table. And please identify yourself with your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes, if you would be so kind. Our first speaker is Laura Downs, followed by Mr. Kelly. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Laura Downs. I reside at 211 Midvale Street. I'm the president of the Falls Church Elementary PTA, which represents Jesse Thackeray Preschool, Mount Daniel Elementary, hence the purple sweater, and Thomas Jefferson Elementary. This evening, I am also representing the MEH PTA led by Carolyn Bruce and the George Mason PTSA led by Mary Stevens. Last month, the three PTAs held a joint membership meeting. Many of you were present. Thank you. Dr. Noonan and Wyatt Shields presented a summary of both the school board budget and the city budget. After the presentations, each PTA took a vote of its membership whether to support the budget. The membership of all three PTAs unanimously voted to support the school board budget. We feel the 2.9% requested increase in budget growth is a fair request, which is a result of a conservative and prudent budget. This budget leaves out over 2/3 of requests from teachers, staff, and principals. In addition, it is the smallest requested increase in the last five years. The centerpiece of this budget is a 3% cost-of-living adjustment for all staff, which is among the lowest in the region, as surrounding school systems are proposing salary increases averaging 4.7%. While the COLA will improve teacher pay, on average, our teacher salary scale is below Arlington's current salaries. The PTAs see the COLA as vital retaining our teachers and recruiting new ones. In fact, just recently, the Department of Education of Virginia highlighted 10 areas of critical teacher shortages in our state, among them, pre-K through 8th grade teachers, math teachers in grades 6 through 12, and foreign language teachers pre-K all the way through 12th grade, which makes it even more important to keep our staff salaries competitive. This budget adds an additional school psychologist. Our current ratio is 1 to 1,400, and the recommended ratio is 1 to 700. This budget also adds a resource teacher in special education, as well as support for PYP at the elementary level and support for ESOL students. Finally, it's our understanding that the 2.9% increase will not result in a tax increase for our citizens. We ask that you vote to approve the 2.9 requested increase to demonstrate the city council's support of our teachers and understanding of the vital role our schools play in all aspects of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Kelly.
Hello. My name is Farrell Kelly. I reside at 600 Roosevelt Boulevard, and I'm the president of the Falls Church City Education Association. I've been a teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School for the past 10 years and have resided at 600 Roosevelt Boulevard for the past 5 and 1/2 years. I'm here today with some of my colleagues to speak to the school board's proposed budget and transfer request as you begin official deliberation and consideration of the city manager's budget today. As a teacher, a homeowner, and a taxpayer, I urge you to fund the school board's request. The 2.9% increase in the school's transfer request comes in significantly lower than projected revenue increases for the city. I know that you want to save money where you can, as the city faces the need to pay for long overdue capital improvements, and I applaud you for doing what needs to be done for the city's capital requirements in both the schools and the civil infrastructure. We've all heard the phrase "kick the can down the road" for too many times over the past decade. I don't want to hear it anymore. Capital improvements like the new school, work on the library, and renovation of City Hall are necessary, but it's not wise to pay for overdue capital needs by ignoring or underfunding current necessary operating expenses. For the schools, such an imbalance would force us to give our current students less than they need and deserve and weaken our top-notch school program, even as we're finally building a home to hold our high school students. If the budget comes in under the requested 2.9% increase, the school board will have to make impossible choices. Either the 3% COLA for staff will have to go, or we won't be able to staff our classes and mental health services according to school board policies and student needs, which will add to the responsibilities of each and every staff member. Effectively, by underfunding the operating budget, city council would be asking the teachers to pick up a large portion of the tab for the new high school in either increased workload or lost compensation. There aren't many other industries that do that. As a taxpayer and a homeowner, like other Falls Church residents who voted overwhelmingly to pass the bond referendum last fall, I've been happy to pay my share. As a teacher here in Falls Church, though, I have a lot of jobs I'm happy to do. Paying for the new school shouldn't be one of them. I wonder how many of you have had to pay for the buildings in which you work? PYP at the elementary level and support for ESOL students. Finally, it's our understanding that the 2.9% increase will not result in a tax increase for our citizens. We ask that you vote to approve the 2.9 requested increase to demonstrate the city council's support of our teachers and understanding of the vital role our schools play in all aspects of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Kelly.
Hello. My name is Farrell Kelly. I reside at 600 Roosevelt Boulevard, and I'm the president of the Falls Church City Education Association. I've been a teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School for the past 10 years, and have resided at 600 Roosevelt Boulevard for the past five and a half years. I'm here today with some of my colleagues to speak to the school board's proposed budget and transfer request as you begin official deliberation and consideration of the city manager's budget today. As a teacher, a homeowner, and a taxpayer, I urge you to fund the school board's request. The 2.9% increase in the school's transfer request comes in significantly lower than projected revenue increases for the city. I know that you want to save money where you can, as the city faces the need to pay for long overdue capital improvements, and I applaud you for doing what needs to be done for the city's capital requirements in both the schools and the civil infrastructure. We've all heard the phrase "kick the can down the road" for too many times over the past decade. I don't want to hear it anymore. Capital improvements like the new school, work on the library, and renovation of City Hall are necessary, but it's not wise to pay for overdue capital needs by ignoring or underfunding current necessary operating expenses. For the schools, such an imbalance would force us to give our current students less than they need and deserve, and weaken our top-notch school program even as we're finally building a home to hold our high school students. If the budget comes in under the requested 2.9% increase, the school board will have to make impossible choices. Either the 3% COLA for staff will have to go, or we won't be able to staff our classes and mental health services according to school board policies and student needs, which will add to the responsibilities of each and every staff member. Effectively, by underfunding the operating budget, city council would be asking the teachers to pick up a large portion of the tab for the new high school, in either increased workload or lost compensation. There aren't many other industries that do that. As a taxpayer and a homeowner, like other Falls Church residents who voted overwhelmingly to pass the bond referendum last fall, I've been happy to pay my share. As a teacher here in Falls Church, though, I have a lot of jobs I'm happy to do. Paying for the new school shouldn't be one of them. I wonder how many of you have had to pay for the buildings in which you work. I hope you'll take these thoughts into consideration as you begin your discussion of the budget tonight. Thank you for all the hard work you do on behalf of our city, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Before you walk away, I just, on a personal note, I think all three of my students, my kids have had you as a teacher, and I think you're one of the finest teachers in our school system. So thank you for coming out. Thank you.
That's very kind. Thank you.
There are some other great teachers in the audience. I'm not going to call them all out, but I'm looking at a few of them, so we have a great, great bunch of teachers. So thank you all for the fine work you all do. And that's all I've got for the speakers at the present time. Why don't we move on now to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, and members of council. Then I will go make my way to the podium and to present the budget, and as I go there, I'll pass out the budget books and ask for Cindy and Celeste's help on that.
And as you go there, I'm going to read a disclaimer.
As usual, you get to do the heavy lifting. If you can take that for the public, I'll just take this.
So I make the following statement before city council's receipt of the proposed budget report, item 9A. My wife is employed by the Falls Church City School System, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. However, I can participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connolly?
I also make the following statement before city council's receipt of the budget report in item 9A. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. I can participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right. What say you, Mr. Shields? Any disclaimers from you?
No disclaimers, yet. Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. What we'll do tonight for the presentation of the budget is it will be a team effort. I will start off with an overview of the budget for 2019. Then I'll turn it over to our chairman of the school board, Mr. Lawrence, who, along with Dr. Noonan, will present the school board's adopted budget request. And then I'll take the microphone back to go through the capital improvements program. So when we did this first in our dry runs, I think it took about, what, 28 minutes to get through our slides, so we'll see how we do now that we're live. One of the first things I do want to do, though, before I get started, is just give a thank you to all of the people who've worked on this budget. Our department directors and their staffs have worked very hard on this budget. The city is undertaking very serious objectives, and we're working very hard to deliver those capital projects. And our department directors, they're passionate, they're dedicated, they care about service, and they're also very mindful of the investments that we're making in our capital plant and what that means in terms of overall economy, in terms of how we deliver government services. And we've worked very hard on that. Our leader for the whole effort on the operating budget is our CFO, Kieran Bawa. And she is here. She's also joined by her family. So that puts the pressure on all of us. We all need to be on our best behavior, and this budget needs to be very well received. Thank you, Ms. Bawa.
It's all on you.
Thank you for joining us. And our leader on the capital improvements program is Cindy Mester, and neither Kieran nor Cindy can do it alone. It's a huge team effort, but they spearhead both of the efforts. Two women leaders making history in Falls Church, so thank you. So let's jump in. So here's an overview. On the operating budget, on the general government expenses, we're coming in with a request for a 1.7% increase in our operating budget. The school transfer is at 2.8%, so that's what the school board has adopted. Sometimes characterized as 2.9, sometimes characterized as 2.8, but I think we agreed it's 2.8 is what the number is. WAMADA capital is a really big thing that we're wrestling with. And of course, everyone read in the newspaper about the General Assembly making a big step over the weekend to help fund our capital costs. We don't know all the dimensions of that. We don't know what that means for other aspects for transportation program, and we also don't know what it means for the bottom line in terms of what the city's local contribution for WAMADA will need to be. So the number that's in the budget that's before you is what I think we can safely characterize as a worst-case scenario, where the state funding is not there, and there still are some big steps in the process they need to go through before what the state's going, what its role is going to be in funding WAMADA capital. And annual debt service, and so we'll spend a lot of time talking about that, but we're paying for in this budget probably the most anticipated and well-planned part of this budget. It's been discussed now for years and was discussed very publicly in the referendum last fall for the George Mason High School bond, but also for the library and for City Hall, other critical components to our CIP. So the numbers we presented last July now will be in the budget that you will see here tonight. So those are the big three things that we'll want to cover. So when you look at the numbers in a little bit more granularity, general government with a budget of $37.8 million, a $630,000 increase or 1.7%. The school transfer will go to $42.3 million, a $1.1 million increase or 2.8%. The contribution to metro rail, metro bus, WAMADA is an increase of $2.3 million. It will go up to $2.3 million in increase in total of 1.3. Now, some of that will be with some NVTA money, so the net effect is 1.1 is what is built into the tax rate for the budget. And then, of course, debt service, our current debt service in the budget is 6.4 million. We'll be stepping up to 9.6 million, a $3.1 million increase. And then in CIP financing, we've been talking for a long time about how we're going to finance all of these, and one part of this council's strategy was to invest funds from the water sale proceeds and in the pension plan and receive a return on equity. This is Mr. Kalin's contribution to helping the long-term sustainability of our capital improvements program. So with the market returns for the first year, that return is fully realized in the budget, and we anticipate that it will be for years to come. So total expenditures are growing 7.6% in the proposed budget, with the largest increases coming from debt service and from WAMADA. Now, if you recall back in July of 2017, when we were talking about the capital improvements program, we talked about what is the impact to the tax rate. And the blue line at the top is a scenario if there's not any economic development up at the West Falls Church campus, and the red line at the bottom is if the economic development does go on schedule and realizes the transactional benefits and the future tax yield that we're planning on. And so what this budget represents, then, is that impact for the CIP that now is in the budget that is before you, and the impact is just over $400 for the median homeowner in the city. And how this all translates into tax rates, the bottom line is that I'm recommending a 5.5 cent increase in the real estate tax rate. When we talked about this in July, we were talking about a 6 cent increase in the tax rate. So that 6 cent increase for the tax rate or the impact for the median homeowner of $406 is built into the budget. That number has stayed the same. It is in line with our projections last July. The operating budget, on the other hand, because revenues, because the economy is growing, we're beneficiaries of the fact that the national economy is expanding, and we see it in our meals tax revenues and our business license revenues, et cetera, that without WAMADA, then what we would be looking at is a net 3 cent increase in the tax rate. In other words, operating budgets would allow for a 3 cent decrease in the tax rate. WAMADA in itself, however, as put into the budget, represents about 2.5 cents. So what you get is the net effect of 5.5 cents. Now, we'll have more discussion about all of these items, but that's the broad overview of the budget that's before you. So let's step back and talk about budget guidance. This was adopted by the city council on December 11th. Guidance at the very top was to maintain excellent government services in schools. The guidance has a 2% operating growth cap. It calls for complying with fiscal policies. It calls for competitive employee compensation and investment in our business districts, and investment in the neighborhoods with traffic calming, and working with our regional partners to control WAMADA costs. And so all of those are an aspect of this budget. Here's an overview of our operating revenues. Our largest share of our revenues do come from real estate property taxes about, you know, the slice, the lighter blue slice is from the commercial sector, and the remainder is from the residential sector. Other business-related taxes are from the sales tax, meals tax, and business taxes, and we'll talk about how those have changed in the next slide. But that's where the money to operate all of our operations comes from. One other thing we'll note is that the role of state and federal funding in the local government is relatively small, at just about 5% of our total budget. Here's the growth trajectory that we're looking at. The real estate tax figure at 7.8% growth does include the 5.5 cent rate increase as well as growth in assessed value. Personal property, those receipts are already in, and we know that they're seeing very healthy increases, both from business tangible and from new vehicles brought onto our rolls. Meals tax also is rising strongly, and other taxes also are going up. So total revenue is growing 7.6%, and again, that does include that the real estate tax rate increase that I mentioned earlier, 5.5 cents. Assessed value growth overall is 3.4%, and of that growth, 36.1 million of that is from new construction, and 136.3 million of that is from market appreciation of our tax base. So the total assessed value of real estate in the city is now just over $4.1 billion, so one penny on the tax rate generates about $410,000. These are a summary of real estate tax rates in the region, and with the proposed rate at $138.5, this is where we would fall in the region. And as has been the case, the counties with the larger economies of scale are on the lower end of the spectrum, and the smaller jurisdictions are on the upper end of this I will note that with the counties, there are many special taxing districts, and we've seen this slide in past presentations, but it's just worthy of note that special tax districts are a feature of county financing. And so just as an example, in Tyson's Corner, the effective rate is $148.1 when you factor in the transportation overlay districts and other special taxes that they have there. And that is important in terms of commercial competitiveness and the way we look at things. The impact on the median homeowner's bill, and this is one that we take very seriously as we're putting this budget together, and we do recognize that with the major capital expenditures we're undertaking, that it has a significant impact on our taxpayers. In FY 2019, the median home value will be just under $700,000. We usually just round to $700,000 as shorthand, but this is the actual median number. And so the average home assessment growth is 2.8%, and so that represents a $262 increase for the median homeowner. The 5.5 cent tax rate increase for the median homeowner would represent $372. So taken together, that's a $634 increase for the median homeowner. So again, this was a big part of the discussion last summer about the capital improvements program, and we know we'll have a lot of discussion on this as we go forward through this budget process. Property tax relief, largely in light of knowing that these are coming online, we're working with the treasurer on a package of recommendations for the city council for tax relief for the disabled and for the elderly. Effectively, what we would do is take the budget allotment for tax relief up to $327,000 per year, and that would be built into the budget. It's about a $90,000 increase, and we'll work through the details of how that would work, but the idea is to change the eligibility thresholds for senior tax relief. On the expenditure side, this is where the funding goes. Education receives about 45% of total expenditures. We do have debt service shown at the bottom at the six o'clock position of the pie chart, and it's broken into debt service that goes for schools and debt service that goes for general government. And then going around the horn there, the other sort of major components of our budget include public safety, which is police and fire at 12% of the budget, public works at my eyesight is actually 6%, wrecking parks and library at 5%, our human services at 3%, and community development at 6%. Debt service is going to 10% of the budget, and historically, we've been between 6% and 8%. So this is our first big step up in debt service, and that we anticipate will go up to about 15%, just under 15% of the budget by 2021. Employee compensation, what is built into the budget is a salary adjustment for employees that would be based on a merit increase, a 3% increase with no COLA. For the police department, which has a step program, it would be a 3% step with zero COLA. We will be keeping an eye, as budgets are coming out, to assess that for competitiveness. Benefits changes, health insurance is about an overall 1.5% increase, so that's very modest, and we're relieved to see that, and some of our programs actually have a decrease. And our pension costs are going down because of positive market returns. The employer contribution to the city's contributions is now about $500,000 less in 19 than it was in 18, so that's a very positive trend. I'm asking for a match for employees who participate in the city's savings plan. Currently, the city does a $5 match per pay period for employees in a thrift plan, and I'm recommending that be increased to $20 per pay period. That's where it was before the recession, and so it's a restoration of a benefit that we've had in the past and encourages saving. In terms in the area of efficiency and consolidation, two internal changes that we want to just discuss, and the council is aware of both of those, but the merger of economic development and development services has created efficiencies. It allows us to put more staff resources and staff leadership directly towards economic development and align that mission with our planning and with our building permit department. So we think we'll deliver a better service, and we think we're doing it more efficiently. We're also allowed, through this merger, to have a dedicated project manager for the West Falls Church, for the West Falls Church project. With respect to our HR department, last year, our deputy city manager was appointed to be our HR director. This budget now will formalize that arrangement, but we do ask for an additional part-time support for HR, which is built into the budget. This will allow the deputy city manager to have slightly more time to dedicate towards a legislative program and to other special projects, which have traditionally been in the DCM's portfolio. I think the bigger message on efficiency is this, however. Our staff levels today are lower than they were 15 years ago, about 4% lower. Over that same period of time, the city's population has grown by 30%, and so our staff, I think, really has embraced the idea of working through of how we can deliver services in the most efficient way possible, and that's reflected in our overall staffing levels. We do have money in the budget for our commercial districts, and this is, really came out of the council's, directly out of the council guidance and out of the retreat that you had two weeks ago. A couple of notable items that are in the budget, funding for the Great Streets project on Park Avenue with a focus on the blocks in the downtown area. We have VDOT grants that will help us execute that in the coming year. The 60K that's from the hotel tax that stays in the budget, and that's really dedicated towards doing these things like tree lighting, flower baskets, keeping our downtown clean and those benefits. The Maple and Broad intersection's been very problematic. Some of our council members have noticed that it doesn't work well, the ped crossings in particular. That intersection needs a complete rewiring, and so we have pay-as-you-go money to do that in the budget. Our transportation demand management is supported in this budget, and we also have the EDA-funded Park Plaza, which is in engineering and design, as well as the South Washington Street. the EDA-funded Park Plaza, which is in engineering design, as well as the South Washington Street Transportation Project improvements. Those are underway with undergrounding right now. So there's a lot going on in our commercial districts to make them more attractive and more conducive to commerce. Our neighborhood traffic calming program, so for the first time, we do have built into the budget funding for the NTC. We're using NVTA 30% money for that purpose. But that money is in addition to the grant that we secured last summer, where we have funding of $636,000. Again, those projects will not be delivered till the 2020, 2021 timeframe, so we do have money budgeted in 2019 to keep that program and keep the CACT moving forward with that citizen-driven request for traffic calming in the city. For Womata, our metro subsidy in FY 18 is just under $1 million at $943,000. In 2019, we need a $1.3 million increase, and that's based on Womata's budget. And so right now, there are not additional state funds helping us with that and these numbers. The net effect in terms of what the taxpayer support is 1.1 million, we'd be using $288,000 from NVTA money. Now, as we read the bill and we analyze it, we think that what's going to happen is the NVTA share is going to grow. That's part of the state's solution, and that's going to impact other parts of the transportation program, some of those other projects that I've listed, including potentially the neighborhood traffic calming program. So we're going to keep a very close eye on that. And lastly, I'll note, and then I'll turn it over to our, for the school presentation, in the budget is a list of what our department heads identified in their work with a budget of unfunded needs, and they total $4.2 million. So we'll discuss those, we'll understand those, and then if funds are available in the future, we'll have that list as a way to try to triage what the top needs are, but they include items that are listed here. Some of them are just basic core services of keeping our streets paved and sidewalks repaired, public safety. IT staffing and equipment is really is a growing need. We're making some progress in this year's budget, but we need to do more in that area. So with that, I will now turn it over for the school budget, and if we could queue up that presentation for Chairman Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, and welcome, Mr. Webb, Chairman Webb. Thank you for coming out this evening for your service to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to present the proposed school budget. First, I want to say publicly thank you to our, all of our teachers who are here this evening for the hard work that they have put forward in helping come up with this, which we all know is a tight budget because of some of the budget constraints that we have going on this year. Our superintendent, and particularly our new finance staff with Christian Michael and Michelle Kopic, who did a great job of working, doing some definitely budget scrubbing to find some additional dollars to help us get to the point where we are this evening. I want to publicly thank them for the hard work that they did getting us to this point. First, Foster City Public Schools is a student-centered, innovative, and inclusive community of lifelong learners. We strive to guarantee personalized environments that support each student's unique needs, where each student achieves at least one year academic growth annually, and where each graduate is prepared for the next steps in life as a responsible, caring, and internationally-minded citizen. We aspire to be the premier international baccalaureate school district. To that end, we are continuously improving as a learning organization. Our five triennial plan priorities include student-centered teaching, learning excellence staff, optimal facilities and learning environments, fiscal management, and community engagement. The school budget this year for FY 19 budget reflects our triennial plan priorities and current collective and urgent needs. Our budget request for an increase in funding is not a wish list. It is what we all need for our system. The school board recognizes and values the investment our community had put forward in the CIP in November, and that is our new high school that we all have now begun to work on bringing to fruition. The budget respects the investment and demonstrates fiscal restraints with support in the current CIP environment. This slide gives you an idea of our priorities within our budget. Our request for the FY 19 budget is primarily to provide our employees with a cost-of-living adjustment. We have worked diligently to address teacher pay, and the entire budget reflects our investment in compensation. In total, 85% of our budget is for the employee compensation, which includes salaries and benefits. FCCPS, like surrounding school systems, spend a clear majority of our budget on our employees, reflecting the fact that education is a labor-intensive venture. Employees' costs are chiefly driven by enrollment, and schools do not have the ability to defer new hires for budgetary reasons without impacting class sizes and student instruction. With our commitment to small class sizes and being a premier international baccalaureate school district, and with the state's funding methodology that results in nearly 83% of FCCPS's revenues being from local funds, support for our city council is required to provide salary increases for our employees. So some of the keys to that ambitious goal of our triennial plans, to ensure that we are able to retain and recruit the very best, our budget request includes a 3% cost-of-living adjustment that will benefit our employees and improve our salary scale. We wish we could provide our employees with both a STEP and cost-of-living adjustment, but with funding constraints, we simply just can't do that in this particular climate. FCCPS's focus on scale adjustments for the last four years of competitiveness is with Arlington County. With state and national teacher shortages, a cost-of-living adjustment is needed to ensure that we do not lose ground in the regional compensation, regional salary compensation. The single largest increase in our FY 19 budget is to provide that 3% cost-of-living increase. Our employees are our number-one resource. Fair and competitive compensation is essential for all of our employees. Our request for the 3% COLA reflects fiscal constraint is... The school budget request is for operation is transfer increase of 2.9%, which this component combines with the funding prior provided to our community services fund. This combines our transfer increase to 2.8%. The request will fund our 3% cost-of-living adjustments for all employees, and will adjust and will allow us to add a psychologist's position. Supporting our students' social and emotional wellness is critical. Currently, FCCPS has one psychologist for every 1,339 students, and adding another will reduce this ratio to a 1.9, 1 to 914 students per psychologist. The National Association of Psychologists recommends one psychologist for every 500 to 700 students. Our new hire improves our ratio, but we still fall significantly short of this recommendation. Fairfax County currently has a 1,189 to 1, and Arlington is working to reduce their ratio from 1 to 1,650 to 1 to 775, but hasn't fully funded this yet. Arlington appears to currently be approximately 868 to 1. Our operating funds increase of 2.9% will just cover the cost of living and the psychologist. The other new initiatives were funded through realignments and reductions. As I was stating before about where we are with the employees, our number-one resource, our request is to provide the 3% COLA reflecting fiscal constraint, and as a result, it is less is being proposed by many surrounding systems. Regionally, we must be competitive. Fairfax continues to enhance teacher pay and has proposed an average increase for teachers of 5.5%. Regionally, the increases range from 2.5% to 7.6%. While Arlington falls at the bottom of the range, even after FCCPS provides a 3% COLA, we still remain below Arlington. The average gap for the entire scale between Arlington County and FCCPS is negative 1.3%. With the largest gap existing for teachers with 10 years, 10 to 20 years of experience. Recognizing the funding will be limited, Dr. Noonan has stated that the budget process for FY 2019, 21909, by receiving each revenue and expenditure, reviewing each revenue and expenditure line. Reductions and realignments include savings from employee benefit rates, changing, changes and from salary turnovers. All of our accounts were also reviewed, resulting in reductions in fundings for new capital leases for buses and computers, tuition in other divisions, division utilities, and professional services. All requests for new funding was analyzed, and over those were realigned with the triennial plan were considered for the budget. Where there were only highest priorities, items we included in the FY 2019 budget request, leaving worthy initiatives and aligned with the triennial plans unfunded in order to ensure the most important initiatives could be funded through budget reductions and realignments. Reductions and realignments made to address our highest triennial plan's priorities. Our stated mission is to be a premier international baccalaureate school in the country, and to this proposed budget provides support for all FCCPS students while maintaining small class sizes. In addition to the school psychologist, a counselor is being added to also serve students' emotional and social needs. A new resource teacher in special education will be added, and in LEAP, which is our English or second language program, the new name for that, a teacher position will be repurposed to serve as an English, as at within that role there. These two positions, along with our curriculum resource teacher, will create and support a triad that focuses on instruction for all students and professional learning for all teachers in the division. In support of IB, we are also adding a primary years program coordinator that will serve both Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel Elementary Schools. Within this slide, it shows over the last three years, our overall rate of growth has been consistent on average, but it hasn't been consistent over the year. In FY 2017, student growth was more than double the projection, and then in FY 2018, student growth was below the projection. Effectively, FCCPS experienced FY 2017 and FY 2018 growth in a single year. But looking at the average student growth over the last three years, if students arrived as equal number, in equal numbers, we'd have approximately 71 students in each of the last three years. All this purpose is to, is a long way to say, enrollment projections are not accurate, are overall accurate, but not year-to-year. And importantly, projecting 63 students appear to be very reasonable for the next year. With regards to the budget guidance, with the Foster City having organic revenue growth that exceeded 3%, we are requesting an operating fund transfer increase of 2.9% to support the employees with a cost-of-living adjustment and to hire a school psychologist. A transfer increase of 2% would not even cover the providing a 3% COLA. A 2% transfer would leave a gap of $350,000, a little over $350,000. To address that gap, we would have to reduce the COLA to 2.3 with a significant, with significantly less proposed in other school systems, and perhaps even less than what the city manager potentially is looking at for employees. We would also possibly have to eliminate four teachers. Take other actions, including not funding our triennial plan priorities to reduce the budget increase that was 85% of our budget is people. In closing, our combined transfer increase would be, would allow us for the COLA increase for our teachers and the psychologists. We appreciate your consideration and your investment in the Foster City Public Schools. Our proposed budget reflects our priorities, our students, and our employees. The budget increase resources to support our students' social and emotional well needs and recognizes the value of our employees. Foster City Public School is an asset to our community. On behalf of the school board, I want to thank you for your continued investment and support in the priorities for, priorities that make our Falls Church the great little city that it is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. Appreciate that fine presentation.
Any...
I imagine we'll have some. Why don't we maybe start with, well, I don't know, I don't know how you guys want to do it. Oh, we've got CIP. Why don't we get through the CIP? There is more. That number again.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Webb.
Yeah, just hoping.
Okay, only about 60 more slides, so... I do want to just do an overview of the capital improvements program, and I think we will be pretty brief on this. Before we get to the capital improvements program, just two notes on the utility funds. The stormwater utility, we are not proposing a fee change in FY 19, so we keep that level and continue the mission of mitigating local flooding and complying with federal mandates for water quality. The sanitary sewer, similarly, no requested change in rates for the sanitary sewer utility. One of the things that is noteworthy is that we've completed a capacity study, and we will be using availability fees, which are paid by developers for system upgrades on the west end of the city. Okay, for the CIP, I've got three slides just to remind us of projects that have either recently been completed or were funded in the current year and are underway. We have replaced our voting equipment, and we did it just in time for the last election in compliance with state and federal mandates. Stormwater improvements, traffic signal timing, that was a grant-funded project, and that was implemented. It got thrown out of whack by all the power outages, but we're getting it back in line. The Terry Hill Park Playground just opened about three weeks ago. We completed neighborhood traffic calming on Maple Avenue and on Lincoln. Currently, we're working on the Van Buren Bridge rehabilitation. That also is grant-funded. The South Washington Transit Plaza, the utility undergrounding work is underway right now, grant-funded project. Ongoing sewer rehabilitation, intersection improvements, bike share, we're working to implement this fall. The Larry Graves Turf Field in conjunction with Fairfax County Parks Authority and the Roosevelt Boulevard, we expect that project to be done in approximately 30 days, and that's under construction right now. Our big one, the city hall and Mount Daniel on this slide. Mount Daniel is on target, and Larry Graves, we're so happy about it, we listed it twice. The Big Chimneys Park is in the design phase right now, and we're working with the neighborhood on that. Ms. Callahan is our project lead on that. And then the city hall, of course, is under construction. So there is a lot of work and a lot of investment that's happening in the city. Looking to... So there is a lot of work and a lot of investment that's happening in the city. Looking ahead to 2019, we have $14.3 million scheduled for the coming year. $6 million of that is transportation funds and those are largely state funds that are being passed through the city. And then $93 million over the six-year period with the largest chunk of that being in the transportation realm as well. And that includes some of the major grants we applied for this year for the west end of the city. So in a little bit more detail, the library project goes into its construction phase in FY 2019. We have $7.3 million in the CIP for that. Improvements to the fire station. Ongoing investment in our facilities is built into the budget with pay-as-you-go money. Our local transportation projects are listed here and we're working very hard to deliver those. And then, of course, our WAMADA subsidy at $2.3 million which we've discussed earlier. This is the same dollars that were discussed earlier. They are actually in our capital improvements program. Facility reinvestment, as I mentioned before, $350,000 of pay-as-you-go investment. And these are some of the things that we're trying to get done here in the community center. The HVAC system, for example, is 1968 vintage, so we're working through improvements of that and other improvements for our 12 facilities across the city. The planning commission reviewed the CIP and what's presented to you is the CIP that the planning commission looked at and approved. So we're aligned in that. So in terms of debt, we had a great deal of discussion about our debt exposure with the capital improvements program and it's significant. So today, we have about $46 million of debt outstanding. About 75% of that, $34 million is invested in our schools and $12 million of that is invested in our general government facilities. Looking ahead, with the full CIP, that number grows to a total of $213 million of debt with $164 million invested in our schools and 49.4 invested in general government. So these are very serious undertakings, very serious financial obligations that are built into this capital improvements program. The debt service to expenditures will grow with these investments. In 2019 is where you see that first gray, light green stacked bar above the dark green. So the dark green is our existing debt service which will taper off our books with time. It's currently, as I noted before, about 7% of our budget. So the new debt service is the $2.4 million, a new debt service, which takes us up to just under 10% of our budget. And that will grow up to just under 15% in 2021. Now, our financial planning is to take land to market on the campus, up to 10 acres, and that process is well underway. And we'll have an industry forum later this week as part of that effort. But that is the significant portion of our efforts to shave the peak of that debt service in the most impactful years with the proceeds from the sale and then ultimately with tax yield from that project. Our fund balance projection, we're showing it this year to reflect the council's fiscal policy that were adopted earlier last month. And so we are at our current fiscal policy of fund balance at just under $15 million at 17% of expenditures. In the year 2020, that's the year where debt service will exceed our policy limit of 12% of our annual budget. And so then we will shift then to having an available fund balance policy of a target of 20% of the annual budget. And so we will be in compliance with that policy in the out years. So for those who haven't been following the fiscal policy chart, this might be a little bit confusing, but we can spend more time with it at work sessions. But it reflects, essentially what it reflects is the ability to withstand unforeseen events as we're taking on these significant obligations and have some cushion for things, either economic downturns or other things happening that are not planned. Those reserves are really important for our measures of capital capacity and strength and we are highly rated, AAA by Fitch and by Standard &amp; Poor's and AA+ by Moody's. And these are the reasons why. And it's really ultimately the record of very strong financial management by our governing body and by our city staff. I will also note significant economic development and that's really going to be critical for the city's financial sustainability as we go forward and the future as well. So again, this is, just to sum up, with the operating budget, the WAMADA capital and the annual debt service being sort of the three big areas of interest and areas of work in this budget. The operating budget with the discipline that we've put to our operating budgets and because of growing revenues, in of itself, this would be a year with a 3 cent decrease in the tax rate. The annual debt service, as we discussed in the lead-up to the referendum, represents 6 cents on the real estate tax rate or $2.4 million. That's what's needed for our capital program. And then the WAMADA capital, which is a work in progress, requires 2.5 cents on the real estate tax rate and that's built into the budget. And we'll do more work on that as we go forward. And this is another way of looking at the same numbers, but the recommendation is to advertise that your first reading on March 26th, a real estate tax rate of $138.5, which represents a 5.5 cent increase in the real estate tax rate. So here's just a note on the schedule. We'll have on this coming Sunday, right before the Women's History Walk at 4 o'clock. At 2 o'clock, we'll meet here in this room for our ongoing Sunday series of town halls. So that will be an update on the campus project and I think we'll spend most of our time actually on the budget and the CIP, but they all need to be thought about together and we will provide updates on both and get comments on both. Then on the 26th, as I noted, there'll be a public hearing and that's the night of first reading on the budget and on the tax rate ordinance. So it's your work session next Monday. We'll do this overview and have the documents all prepared for your review that we would be asking for first reading on the 26th. Then we have an additional Sunday series town hall on April 8th at 2:00 PM and again in this room. And then April 9th, a public hearing and on April 23rd, the final public hearing and final consideration. We'd be happy to answer any questions and thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Very fine presentation. Questions? Comments? Ms. Hardy?
I always have questions, but I'm happy not to go first if someone else would like to go first.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I guess the big elephant in the room is the 2.5 cents that we need for WAMADA. And I know that we've had some early discussion about where that will land, given that General Assembly needs to act on it further and maybe the governor will make amendments. But how will we know whether we're going to be at that worst-case scenario or better? And how does it sync with our budget timeline? So when we have to adopt the budget end of April, will we know where Richmond stands?
It's going to sink inconveniently, already has. So the General Assembly has not adopted a budget and it's anticipated that they may not adopt a budget until June. So there's a degree of uncertainty. I think on our upcoming work session, we're going to get more analysis and I think we'll have a much better read on where we think this is going to go with respect to WAMADA funding.
Clearly, besides impacted other transportation projects that we care about, this clearly is a big drain on our budget with 2.5 cents, almost half of what you're proposing this year. So I think it's important to understand the different ways that this could go and what options we might have on how that looks. And to the extent that council can help advocate or lobby, I think they'll sign us up to help with that too if we need to, because I think that's an impact definitely to us and I imagine all the other Northern Virginia jurisdictions. Next question. On Slide 7, which I'm glad that we show kind of have revenue change. I love when we get into work session to talk about how both revenues and expenses look over time. I know you're just presenting FY 19, but in her request now, just to show how that looks, especially I think our expenditures chart will look different definitely from last year to this year. So that's a request there. On Slide 12, I think that's the first time that we'd seen the total taxpayer impacts of the combination of real estate assessments, so the 3.5% kind of property assessment growth plus the proposed 5.5 cents you're proposing. That's pretty staggering. It'd be great to just share that more. I think that's just an important slide because when we talk cents, people don't really translate cents into, well, what does it mean for my bottom line? I think that's an important chart to actually understand for the medium tax homer, this is proposing a $634 tax rate increase, 200-some from increased property values and 300-some from the budget. So I think for folks watching from home to pay attention to that. Slide 13, property tax relief. I know we'll talk more about it at work session. So this is one of my personal priorities. I'm glad that we are making headway for that. Question is, is this funded in the budget you're proposing or is it something that's going to be an additional line item that will be in the unfunded needs?
Funding at this level is in the budget. Now, so here's the way it will work though. The application process for the current year, which impacts the June billing, two months, three months from now, and next November billing is already complete. And so the first time that this would take effect is actually next June. And so that's one half of the fiscal year. So the dollar amount in the budget is $45,000. $90,000 is what it will need to be the next year because that's a full year.
And similar to the request I made to the treasure off-line is, you know, clearly with the impacts we're proposing for Slide 12, needing to expand tax relief to our seniors and disabled population is really important to me personally, but I'd love to ask you to know how we benchmark against other jurisdictions because I know that when I looked at it myself a couple of months ago, we are nowhere nearly as competitive. And given that our tax rate's 30% higher than everyone else, I think it's just important to know and benchmark ourselves against and despite expanding eligibility, what that looks like versus our neighbors. And then Slide 14, kind of my comment earlier around making sure that we show that over time perhaps in work session. I'd love to see how that looks over time. Slide 15 on employee compensation. I think we've talked about this before, but help me understand the difference between the merit and the COLA. Does merit require kind of a positive performance review? Is that my understanding?
It does. It does require a positive performance evaluation and so that has to be done before an employee will get that. And if you're on a performance improvement plan, then the increase would be delayed until you satisfied and gotten off that plan.
Now, in previous years, I remember we capped it essentially for our highest paid employees. Are we proposing that this year or just keeping it at 3% merit for everybody?
This year, it's a straight 3%.
Do we know roughly the math if we capped it like we did in previous years?
What the fiscal impact would be? I don't know that off the top of my head.
Maybe a good work session question to follow up on. And then likewise, similar to my benchmarking question about property tax relief, I'd love to see, I know that you've mentioned that as a bullet point of how we're comparing against other jurisdictions, but I'd love to see what everyone else is doing, especially around the areas of public safety, which I know that, I can remember in Arlington specifically when I read their budget presentation, they were making a marked increase in public safety because they were concerned about retention. And so I'd love to make sure we look at benchmarking at that kind of level. Slide 16, so I remember talking about wanting to see efficiencies in budgets. I appreciate seeing the consolidation. I think I'm big fans of the consolidation between the EDO and community planning. How much efficiency is gained? If we were to quantify the two consolidation moves in here? Again, you don't need to answer it now, but I think it's just good to know what these moves have done. And then a question later, so during budget guidance, I had asked about operating efficiencies across schools and general government. Again, we don't need to talk about it now, but I'd love to know outcome of those conversations because again, when we're taking on such a big lift in capital, I think it's important for us to think creatively about where we can get efficiencies in a little city of our Slide 17, similar to my question about police. I'd love to look at what our ratios by population looks like. So I appreciate the note here that we've had 30% growth since the recession in population, but we haven't increased our staff. And so I want to make sure we're not shortchanging ourselves on things like public safety, first responders, et cetera. Slide 18, I know post windstorm, we talked about the Hillwood and Annale light. I didn't see that on this list. Does that mean that we don't need to pay for it out of CIP?
What I think we will be doing is transferring a different project already approved to Annandale. And it will likely be the West and Lincoln intersection. And so we would delay that project, use those funds and move it over to Annandale. And Hillwood, that hasn't been finalized, but that's the state of our thinking.
Just a comment on neighborhood traffic calming. Glad to see that we're funding that as requested, given the importance and priority we've all talked about. Moving on to CIP projects. And actually, this might be a question for the schools, but perhaps you all know about it as well. I heard we were redoing the playgrounds, obviously at Mount Daniel with the renovation, but at TJ as well. Are those CIP projects or are those taken care of in the school operating budget?
Those are not CIP. Those are taken care of as part of the daycare operating funds.
So using daycare operating dollars?
Yes, correct.
Is there any benefit for us to use capital funding for that instead, given that we talk about other parks as part of capital projects?
We're very fortunate, I think, to have the daycare pick it up. So I think it's probably the best use of funds as opposed to using CIP funds.
I mean, not that I want to take on any more debt, given that picture we looked at, but I'd love to know that if we debt finance it, because I imagine those playgrounds have a 10-plus year life and would qualify for CIP dollars, whether those daycare funds could be reused in the rest of the school operating budget.
They actually, there's a very defined way that those can be used.
Benefit daycare recipients.
They have to benefit daycare recipients and a lot of the CIP projects that we have don't actually do that. So we try and pick and choose where we can to pay for those through the daycare funding.
I've got more back for the city manager, so, sorry. You know, I had to go to Slide 36, which is the fund balance, given all the discussion we've had about fiscal policies. Just a personal peeve of mine, so one thing that I think we remember talking about was 70% of unassigned fund balance is the target, but in the newly adopted policy where we're talking about available balance, we don't have a target of 20%. I believe it was 15% to 20% was called is the range. And so I think it's important because when you read that, you're like, oh, FY '21 and '23, we're getting really close. We're well within the 15% to 20% that council adopted. So I want to make sure that that distinction's called out. There's no neat way to show it on a chart like this, but I want to make sure the difference is called out, that it's not a target of 20%. I think what we had gotten, Davenport's agreement that we were being sufficiently prudent was the 15% to 20% available balance. Let's see. Last comment on this one is on the schedule, so Slide 40. Could we just add the work sessions in there? Because I know we're going to go deep on a lot of this stuff and I think that, you know, for the people who really want to pay attention to the budget, they probably would benefit from knowing when our work sessions are too. I know we don't take public comment then, but I think it'd be great to show that. Should I pause here or should we continue?
Keep on going.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to the school budget. Similar to the request on Slide, this number's really faint, Slide 4. Similar to the request I made to the city manager, I'd love to see what our expenditures chart looks like over time. And it's generally pretty static. You hear that 80-some percent of our school budget goes towards salaries, but I think that's important. The other thing that I've seen in previous budget presentations, if I remember correctly, is actually our data on cost per pupils over time and how we benchmark. So I know that the WABE Guide publishes that for across all the jurisdictions. So whether we have something like that, I think it's just important to track. I know we look at that pretty carefully to make sure that we're spending the right amount of money. In some jurisdictions, I actually find it interesting, in Arlington, for example, they actually pride themselves on actually spending less money per people. They see it as a sign of efficiency. They're like, oh, we're actually getting more efficient about it. So I think it's just important data to show there. And likewise, when we talk about teacher scale, I know that there's some data that was presented on Slide 7, but I would love to show what the teacher scale looks like versus our neighbors, especially as they talk about budgets. I'm just a big fan of making sure we know what's happening around us, whether it's on the general government and school side. On that note, I know that in one of the presentations, I don't remember what slide it was now, I think, Mr. Webb, you noted that with Arlington increasing or giving it an extra step, we remain behind at 1.3%. And so personally, I think you never pay teachers enough. And I know, but I feel like benchmarking ourselves against Arlington is probably a game that we're never going to win. We just have such a different base of revenue. And so I know that a goal that I remember the previous superintendent had was that we should be within 3% to 5% of APS within a four-year plan. And last year might have been that fourth year. So I believe it was the fourth year of that four-year plan. Given that we're actually 1.5%, are we declaring success that we're actually doing pretty well because we're 1.5%? And the goal was, you know, five or six years ago, that we get to within 3% to 5% across all the scales on average.
I think we have done a great job of being able to do that, but what I would highlight is that because of what we've done over the years and being more competitive in our salary with teachers, that we're able to now... more competitive in our salary with teachers, that we're able to now, teachers in other counties, Fairfax being one, that we're now, teachers are leaving there to come to work for Falls Church, where that has now put other jurisdictions around us to do what we did four years ago. So now we have to continue to be competitive because others are trying to do what we did because they're seeing some of their best and brightest teachers leaving their jurisdictions to come to ours or others. But yes, but Arlington is still one of the most competitive, and I think all of us are still making that effort to kind of chase Arlington.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, they have a $20 million budget shortfall this year because of their commercial revenues did not come in as expected. So I think it's really, you know, laudable that they're still trying to keep up their teacher salary and the importance of that. And likewise, I'm glad that we're putting an extra attention to it. But I do think that it's important to look at those bands. So if our goal originally was 3% to 5% felt like a reasonable goal, and we're actually 1.5%. Like, I want to make sure that we call it what it is, which is, hey, we got to what we thought we needed to do. We're going to keep going because we think it's important to stay competitive. It doesn't mean the work is done. But I just want, I just remembered that 3% to 5% number very distinctly when Dr. Jones had presented that salary plan. Similar to kind of my request for the city manager, I'd love to actually see the details of those salary bands, just to know kind of how we're doing. And speaking more as a parent, so when I attended your work session a couple of weeks ago, I know that we were most concerned about those mid-market bands, and I know that we're concerned about retention. And so one request I'd have is if there's any retention data you could share with us to understand how salary versus other drivers of satisfaction impact, that would be just helpful. But the second is actually whether your 3% increases across all the bands or is it targeted to those mid-year bands where we're concerned about losing kind of mid-year, mid-tenured, I guess, teachers?
This 3% is across the bands.
Okay. Is there a reason why that we wouldn't target the ones that we're most concerned about that we're less competitive in?
I think with overall that we are making sure that all of our, from our bus drivers across the board are all compensated, which everyone has not necessarily over the last couple of years of compensation, everyone has not seen an increase. And we thought this year was the year that we wanted to make sure across the board at every position saw that increase.
Absolutely. And I'm actually glad that the general manager proposed 3%, I think, on the general government side because as a principal, I think we should pay everybody similarly, right? Like, we shouldn't pay a teacher any more or less than, say, a police officer. It feels fair to do 3%. And I wouldn't expect, you know, someone in the school system to be different, but I think, you know, I wonder whether there'd be any savings, for example, if we had, say, 2.5% in certain bands and 3.5% in other bands, whether you'd net out 3%. But you're really making a difference in those bands because if we're ultimately caring about retention and making sure we keep those kind of mid, I guess, mid-tenure teachers, that we really are concerned about losing to other jurisdictions, and we have retention data that shows that, then we'd make kind of specific increases like that. That's me more speaking as a manager and kind of what I'd look at.
Just for your information, Ms. Hardy, the University of Virginia just recently published a study about teacher retention and recruitment, talking about the national teacher shortage. And they did mention as one of the number-one drivers, and we can bring that as part of the conversation that you're looking forward to having too, was salary. And so when we look at broadly where school districts across the northern Virginia region are and showing a 4.5% increase on average across the region, the 3% that we're suggesting actually falls short of that. So we have recognized that there are a couple of spots in the salary. They're not broad swaths and broad bands that we need to take a look at, but we are in the long term planning to look at our salary structure just in general to help resolve some of those equity issues.
On slide 11, a quick question. So if we don't do the 2.8% or 2.9%, whatever requested is now, is the list on slide 11 an or list or an and list?
It's an or.
It's an or, okay. And so I assume the school board has not had kind of a discussion?
We have not, and we haven't talked about it with the community either.
I think that's it for now, so I will hand it over to someone else. Thank you.
Who's next? Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. I only really have a few comments and questions. The first one is, is it 2.8 or 2.9? I think the math, I think the money's a saint. But, you know, I would think that if I were the school, that if you could make, say, 2.8 with a straight face, and it is 2.8, it actually works better to your cause than this, keep on saying 2.9.
I'm going to actually ask Kristin Michael.
So we have the expert here that we're going to get the magic number.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk. When we look at the transfer, generally, schools tends to focus on the operating transfer. That's the largest portion of funding that we're getting from the general government. And if we look just at the operating fund transfer, it's 2.9%. But the city council also transfers funding to our community services fund to support community use in our daycare program. So when you include all of the funds and look at the transfer to all funds, it's 2.8%. You're absolutely right that we could have just focused on 2.8%, but it's really important that we're transparent with the community, right? And the largest source of that funding is our operating fund. So we tried to specify it's 2.9% for the operating fund and 2.8% for all funds.
Okay. 2.8 it is. Thank you. The, going back to the, our waiver for a certain class of our citizens not to have to pay for the taxes, as to say, real estate taxes have been waived. I think there is a much larger discussion on whether we raise limits or add more people to the pool and what that demographic would look like. But I would like to have a carve-out of the numbers, who's eligible, who receives the benefit. And in particular, my sermon here is to also waive the stormwater for that class of citizens that currently do not pay the real estate taxes. I think that would make it equitable. As I said last time, I think it's unfortunate that we have people coming in and asking for a payment plan for the $50 they can't afford to pay for the stormwater. I think that's just disgraceful for the city. So I don't want that left out. The General Assembly has adjourned, and I think the proper expression is called sine a die, which, not sure if my Latin's that great, but I think it means without the possibility or date of reconvening. So if I'm wrong there, someone correct me. But if indeed we don't have a budget with, that includes the offset for Wamata, I would like to get a legal opinion on what it means if we don't put that in there at all with regard to deficiency in our budget process. As I say, if they do reconvene and they provide the money, that's great. Do we need to put that in at this point in time? It is a lot of money. I think that's the right question to ask.
All right, who's next? Are you, okay, Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking you, Mr. Shields and Ms. Bow and a couple other folks out there, C. Shawna Russell and Greg Anderson with the school board, and Dr. Noonan as a first-timer through the budget process. You guys have been incredibly generous with your time and patience in answering some questions that I've had. So I appreciate that. And then direct outreach, I was also very pleased, just in terms of the discussions we've had, also being on the Budget Finance Committee with Vice Mayor Connolly, how direct and transparent you guys have been in terms of answering questions related to budget items. So for those watching and listening here and sitting in this room, from a first-timer's perspective with the budget process, I've been very appreciative of the resources that you guys have made available. So thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. I will certainly have more questions as we're kind of leaving the first inning here and embarking on what seems to be a fairly long budget discussion process over the next month. There was some discussion with Davenport related to our messaging to the rating agencies about how we were going to raise the tax rate to pay for certain capital improvements, how that was going to be used, and what would happen if we asked for less than the six cents. I was a little bit confused because of the way that it was described, that if we went less than six cents, it reflected poorly on the city. However, I think in the context of that discussion, it might have been asking for six cents just for the capital, where if we ended up a little bit less than the discussion we had had three or four months ago, now ending up at 5.5, that's not going to reflect poorly on us, that we've been able to align ourselves more efficiently or had more revenue than we were expecting, so we don't need the full six, we're actually at 5.5. Can you provide some clarity on that?
I think you, your analysis is right. I think the question will be asked, and the answer to it is, is the six cents is there. The 2.4 million, which was stated at the referendum time and in our capital planning, that's in the budget. It's right there. And that's the question, that'll be the answer to the question, and that'll be a good answer.
Okay. And then, just to follow up on that, when is Davenport meeting with the ratings agencies? When will we hear about that?
That is planned for late April, so it'll be after adoption of the budget.
Okay.
And just to note, it won't be just Davenport. We'll have, you know, I will be there, the CFO will be there, the mayor will be there. So we'll have city officials at that meeting.
Very well represented. I just have a couple of questions for Dr. Noonan or Mr. Webb, maybe really just one question. In light of recent events and a discussion over mental health and school systems and how it's being addressed, you know, we've got one psychologist built into the budget, which is really the only addition you guys are asking for aside from the COLA increase. Can you guys give me an understanding of the number of other resources we have outside of dedicated psychologists through counselors and other folks that are, you know, committed to dealing with some mental health issues throughout the school system? I can't imagine it's just the two psychologists. We have counselors and a number of other folks. And then my follow-up question to that is, in light of all of this, when you look at our planning over the next three to five years, you know, what is our game plan to make sure that we do fall closer in line with the expectation of what that ratio of students per psychologist or students per counselor is going to be?
That's a great question. We have, we do have a number of resources besides the school psychologists that work with our students. As indicated, our, obviously, our school psychologist numbers are out of kilter with respect to the appropriate ratios. We have the same issue with the ratios with, I'm sorry, psychologists, with social workers as well. We have school social workers that are part of our system that help connect students and families to resources, whether it's mental health resources or the like. But unfortunately, in that social work realm, we also have about a 1,400 to 1 social work issue. And that is one of our pieces on the horizon that we're looking at for next year. That was one of the two-thirds of the budget requests that we didn't put into the budget was an additional social worker. We also have school counselors in all of our buildings to support students. And then, of course, our classroom teachers have the best relationships with the students that they serve. So understanding and knowing students very well in the classroom and being able to refer students for school counseling, psychologists or social work is a really great place. Beyond that, we have some external resources that we can connect students to as well through the school psychologist or through the school social worker to get them that extra support that they need.
Right, thank you. Oh, do you have, that's it? Okay. Other questions, comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to Ms. Hardy and others, but also especially to Ms. Hardy for the questions that she ran through. Many of them are covered in the notes that I've written to myself. Well, first, let me say that the objective that I enter into this budget process with is to arrive at a final product that speaks to achieving a complete community here in the city, a community of excellence, both for our schools and for our municipal services. It apparently is going to fall to me to observe that the elephant in the room is, that the school board chose not to follow the guidance that council issued in December for a 2% I understand why they did that. I understand their role in the process. It's to advocate for the very best that they think is reasonable to ask for for our schools. Look forward to the conversation that we'll have with the school board and the superintendent and the advocates for the budget that schools have brought forth. At the same time, I'm sure that my colleagues on the school board and the citizenry understand that our job here now on the city council is to try to put, you know, all needs into the context of what seems possible and reasonable to afford. I would have preferred that we had adhered to the 2% guidance so that the discussion we'd be having now could perhaps have been additive. If an expectation had been created in December that, for instance, the COLA increase might be 1%, then now we could be talking about, you know, it looks like we're going to be able to do more than that. Instead, unfortunately, the discussion that we're going to have is, well, we asked for 3, and we're not even going to be able to get, you know, 2. And that's regrettable, I think. You know, the 2% number was not arbitrary or capricious or arrived at without, you know, considerable thought. And it was, to some extent, a conservative number, I'll grant you that. You know, at the time that it was arrived at, you forget, it wasn't that long ago, but it was before tax reform was passed on the Hill. We really had no idea where the economy was going nationally. You know, we didn't have any idea where interest rates might be as they would affect our borrowing capacity for our major capital projects. We didn't know a lot of things. So the 2% number was predicated on some uncertainty and caution in that regard. Fortunately, most of those things seem to have broken in our favor since December. You know, interest rates are going up, but I still believe they're within the bandwidth that the staff has projected our borrowing to be made at. You know, I don't think any of us know what the federal tax reform bill's impact is going to be, but that impact is going to be felt on people's tax bills starting about a year from now. And I've not heard any expert come forward and explain what impact a community like Falls Church will feel, the people who live here and are homeowners, in terms of the tax bill. Therefore, I would have preferred to have seen a budget that was built around a 2% increase in request. I'm thankful to the manager for coming in below 2%. At the same time, you know, the 2% number was chosen on the city side because I do think there are a lot of areas of need that have gone underfunded, important areas like neighborhood traffic calming, values-driven needs like affordable housing. I would like to see or would like to have seen, and hopefully can have a full discussion about some of the needs on the general government side, which speak to, you know, safety, our values as a community, in terms of affordability. Most of the council visioning session that we had two or three weeks ago was about, you know, addressing vulnerable populations here in the city. I think this budget probably falls a little short of where we might have hoped to go, although there are some steps forward. It falls a little short of where we might have hoped to go with helping some of those So I look forward to, you know, it's also important, I think, for the public to understand that tonight was the first time that the city council has seen this budget. School board has the advantage, considerable advantage in our system. The charter says that the manager presents the school budget that the school board supports. And they have a time advantage and that, you know, they've got their budget out there. This is the first time we've seen this document, and so we have a lot of work ahead of us. I look forward to doing that work, look forward to getting some answers to some questions such as those that Ms. Hardy proposed. Just a couple of them that come immediately to mind, it would be helpful for me to know what's the percentage impact of the COLA, if we give a 2.5% COLA, 2% COLA, less than the 2% COLA, both on the schools and the city side. You know, so much of what we do is people. I mean, it's a huge part of what the schools do, and it's a significant part of what the city does. And, you know, we can't ever pay anybody enough to do the things they do for us. We certainly can't pay the teachers enough, we can't pay, you know, police folks. We can't pay anybody enough to do the excellent work that they do for us, but we try to do the best we can. It would just be helpful, I think, as we go into work session to know how many dollars and cents are involved if we have to cut back on the COLA some. Ms. Hardy's question about where we are relative to teacher pay compared to Arlington is important, and I guess is going to be a big focus of this budget go-around. I had thought that, yes, if we were within 1% or 2% of Arlington's pay, that, you know, we'd declare victory and have a parade. But, you know, our work here has never done, apparently. So, you know, when I see a desire to compete with Arlington, I applaud that because Arlington's a great community. You know, my attention turns to the chart that shows the tax rate differential between the city of Falls Church and Arlington, which is, this budget as proposed would be 38.5% higher, right? There's a buck, about a buck. Yeah. And ours is proposed to be 138.5. You know, sooner or later, that becomes real money for not only people who are in expensive homes, but particularly for first-time home purchasers who are looking to settle in either Falls Church or Arlington and looking at the tax impact of that decision. And, you know, I'm for all of our children. I'm for not only our children who are in school now, but our children who graduate from college and graduate school and want to move back here to this community. I'd like to see us, you know, be competitive in our tax rate. And obviously, we're never going to be probably anywhere even near close to Arlington in our tax rate. But, you know, I think we're going in the wrong direction in a very serious way. And I hope that we can spend some more time in the coming weeks focusing on that, talking about that, and seeing if there's something we can do to address it. I think that's all I have for now. Thanks.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Here we go. Got it. I have a few questions for you. The pension ROI, you have that on page three, and then also, or slide three and then slide 15, we mentioned that. And I think for the benefit of people in the room who aren't aware of what the pension ROI is, you mentioned that that was Mr. Kaelin's contribution, and when I was first elected to city council, I said to Mr. Kaelin, "There's no way I will ever vote for this." And then he convinced me that this was a good idea. Many people convinced me that this was a good idea. And this is really the first year that this idea is paying off. So, I think we just need to elucidate that a little further, that when, can you explain exactly what it is and how much money is in there and why we have a $640,000 pension ROI?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly. With the water sale proceeds, which netted to be approximately $20 million, 9.2 million of that was invested in the city pension fund. And the reason for that is, for city, normal city monies, we earn a rate of return right now of about, under a half a percent interest, because under the law, we have to invest in very safe and conservative and liquid investments. With the investment in the pension fund, the pension fund has earned over its last 10 years, over 7.5% over the 25-year period, over 8% on average per year. And so, this year, the 9.2 million is realizing its 7% return, which is kind of an actuarial construct of what we think will be the sustained, long-term annual yield. The actual yield was higher than that, but for this to be sustainable, the policy was put it at where we think it's going to be year in and year out on average. And so, that's what's now built into the budget, is the dividend from that investment of 640,000.
Right. So, that's a dividend that we get every year because we invested $9.2 million of that water sale money?
That's correct.
Right. So, that is going to help us pay capital reserve, debt service specifically, or all operating?
The council's direction was that it be tied to the capital program. And the reason for that was, A, so the council could track it, and two, so that these investments are for the whole community and you can see exactly where that benefit is going. So, it's worth a penny and a half on the tax rate to fund the capital program.
Okay. And then on slide 15, you mentioned that the pension costs had a $500,000 decrease. Is that a different?
Yes. So, that's just the normal actuarial process that's done every year. And because of market returns, the employer contribution to the pension fund is $500,000 less in FY19 than it was in FY18. We smoothed our returns over a five-year basis, and so it's, you know, it doesn't gyrate terribly from year to year, but this is, because the market returns have been so healthy, that's a pretty significant savings this year.
And Dr. Noonan, do the schools have a similar savings on pension?
We did. We did have some savings, both with the VRS and with the local retirement plan. And I have that for you, if you'd just hang on one second. Well, I can get it for you. I don't have it, I have it right in my fingertips, but I can't find it at the moment, so. You got it? Oh, page 2, excuse me. Yeah. So, the VRS decreased from 16.32% contribution to 15.68, which saved us about $40,000. And the city rate decreasing, decreased and saved us about $110,000, so about $150,000 total.
Okay. Thank you. And then I want to commend Mr. Shields, because in all the times I've been watching this budget, I've never seen a negative operating growth budget, that that was a negative 2.5 cents. That's very impressive. So, thank you for that.
So, relative to what the economy is generating, our operating budgets are growing less than what the economy is giving us.
Right, right. And I find that very impressive. And then my last thing is, are we on, can you go to slide 6, please? The budget guidance. Because I feel compelled to remind everyone that there were eight items on the budget guidance, one of which is the 2% operating growth cap. The others, and if you watched the December 11th meeting where we voted on the budget guidance, there was a big conversation about how do we have one thing that contradicts the other things? So, I just want to make sure we're aware that there was a 2% operating growth cap in there. And if you watched that meeting, you see people say, "Well, let's start there and see what we can do." So, although my dear friend, Mr. Duncan, thinks that's a line in the sand of 2%, my understanding, as we talked about it, is that there was room to discuss around 2%. But also, that the other things in that operating budget are also very important. And it's difficult to say, "We're going to grow by 2%, but also maintain excellent services in schools, comply with fiscal policies, find efficiencies." So, I feel like there are eight things in that budget guidance, and you have done a very good job of keeping close to almost all of them. So, I would like to commend you on that, and let's go forward.
All right. Are there other questions or comments?
Can I just ask a couple of specifics that I wanted to circle back to? I believe Letty picked these up, but I'm not sure. On neighborhood traffic calming, Mr. Manager, is the slide that's provided, is that reflective of current effort on neighborhood traffic calming, not including any additional attention to some of the projects that are in the waiting queue behind the ones that we had said that we would try to get to in this coming fiscal year?
Well, we have exhausted the funds that the council has put to neighborhood traffic calming. I think there's a small balance left, but not enough to do a project. And so, this money is needed in order to keep the project going for the queue that you've referenced.
Okay. So, yeah, the last time we talked about this, we basically were out of money for next year's neighborhood traffic calming. This budget puts some money in to tackle some, some local money in to tackle some projects.
Yes. And so, $200,000, we think, is a number that the CACT gave a lot of thought to, as to what can we actually practically administer? And so, that's what, we tried to take their cue and fund at what they thought was a, based on their history of getting requests and what it costs to do them.
Okay. Thank you. That's the answer to my question. On affordable housing, that is listed as an unfunded need. Do we, I mean, I know we've talked a lot during the retreat, and you've had some other discussions with affordable housing parties. You know, we are facing a significant loss of affordable housing at one of our larger complexes in a timeframe that seems distant now, but will be upon us all too soon. Is there any contemplation in other jurisdictions of a dedicated percentage of revenues of the tax rate going to affordable housing as a fund to, you know, apply more effort in that vicinity? Does Arlington do that? Do any of the smaller jurisdictions do that? Are we thinking about doing that? Is the unfunded need that you've listed here just a sort of general unfunded need? Or is there a certain amount of money you have in mind that we could reasonably begin to apply to affordable housing annually, so that somewhere down, five or six years down the road, we might have enough to actually move the needle on providing affordable housing in the city?
Mr. Duncan, I think that, those are good questions, and they need more discussion. And so, I'm hesitant to give an answer right here, kind of off the cuff.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to raise the questions, and let's talk about it during the work session.
But we will also get some comps in terms of what the other jurisdictions are doing from a dedicated funding perspective.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
All right. Before I get to you, Mr. Z, Mr. Webb, okay, Mr. Z, then Mr. Webb, and then Ms. Hardy.
Well, it's a quick one. While you're, I would like to, we're getting details, I would like to know what the numeric difference is between the 5%, 5 cents to 20 cent contribution increase, 15 cent contribution increase to the 457 plan. I tried to tease that out of the document, but it doesn't seem to be summarized anywhere. And further, I would like to know how it compares to a similar plan for the public safety. I guess they have a different plan, maybe I'm wrong on that, but also the school in particular as well. So, whether they have a match, and whether they're also contemplating a match. I see you shaking your head, so maybe that answer's pretty easy. Thank you.
We'll need to get that response to you in terms of the fiscal impact of the change from $5 to $20 as the employer match.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to respond to some of the comments by Mr. Duncan about the school budget and that, the 2%. First, I just want to say that on the meeting that you all voted on for the guidance, on my recollection as well, there was a starting point, and then we'd work from there. But I take it back even a step further, that the meeting that we all had as a joint meeting, Mr. Duncan was the only person who mentioned 2%. We walked out of that meeting hearing what the, what the manager at the time was talking about of the potential guidance was 3%. So, we were somewhat caught off-guard by 2% that was presented to us as guidance. But we were happy to hear that there was a starting point and that we would work together to get to what was going to be the best for the school system. First, I'd like to recognize that we just passed a huge $120 million bond referendum, knowing that going into this budget cycle, there was going to be some fiscal restraint. And I think we, as a board, we did that this year. This is the lowest request that we've asked for in a number of years. It has consistently come down, with the exception of the year that the council cut our budget. But I think we worked hard creating the relationship, well, creating the relationship from that point forward to actually work together to get to what ultimately works best for both bodies. And I think we've done that over the last two years. And I hope to continue to be able to work and build on that relationship that we've worked hard over the last two years to recreate. Because I know we've had some challenges over the years, but I think we, last year in particular, with our interim and myself as the, my first year of being the board chair, I thought we worked really well together, making compromises when we needed to of making sure that both the general government and the schools' needs were met. And I think we did a great job of that. And I hope this year, we'll continue to do that, because I know over the next four years, with both the West Falls Church project as well as the George Mason project, we have a lot of opportunities that we need to work really closely together for the best of both the schools and the community, because both projects are very important to the long-term sustainability of the city of Falls Church. So, I do look forward to working with you all on that. And I think our budget request reflects restraint where our staff went through and did some number scrubbing and came up with some money to help within many of the initiatives that we needed through our triennial plan. And I hope, over the next month, that we'll work well together as, having more conversations about this, and providing any information that you all, with Ms. Hardy, Mr. Duncan, and others who've asked, and we'll provide that information to you as we go through this process before the budget's passed in April. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate working with you as well. Ms. Hardy, did you have some additional questions?
I did. No, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Webb, because I think the thing that's kind of lost when we stare at these big numbers with, you know, the $700 tax rate impact for the average median homeowners, we lose sight of the fact that, you know, any other year, this would be a good news story, that we were saving 3 cents, I think, on the operating budget, which is very significant. But speaking of sacrifices, I think the earlier discussion on affordable housing prompted me to actually make this request. On slide 21, what we're talking about are unfunded needs, the things we can't get to that's below the line. I'd love to know what those dollar numbers are. And so, for the one I'm most interested in, for example, is affordable housing. So, as I reflect back on what we've accomplished the past few years between neighborhood traffic calming, and we've talked about expanding senior tax relief, I think affordable housing is one of those areas where we're really just frankly not living our community values. So, we talk about diversity, we talk about affordability, and we're just not doing anything here. And so, that's something where I feel like we're falling behind, and while we're a small city, I would love for us to do something. And so, I'd love to know, for all these things that are below the line, what is that dollar amount? Just so that if there are trade-offs council should be making for things that are in your budget versus one of these, I'd love to have that discussion.
We will be discussing them more, I'm sure, as we go forward. Page 53 is where the detailed breakouts for those unfunded needs are listed, and they're listed by department.
That's in the big budget book, I mean?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Yeah. We haven't gotten to that yet. Thank you.
All right. I've got a few questions. Let me ask you, what is the interest rate that's utilized? We're talking about debt and projected debt cost, carry cost. What interest rate do you all use? What assumptions are you making?
For the debt service calculations?
Yes.
Let me, for that question, to Ms. Bawa.
Oh, shoot, her family left.
That's a good, bad time. To be ready for school.
We needed them to stay here. Oh, they've got homework.
So, we are using 3.5% for this year. It was based on the model that we brought for the full CIP, which had a staggered interest rate increase over the three years, 3.5% to 5% over the three-year window for the three tranches. And this one is for the A&E, a little over 10 million, at 3.5% over a 30-year period.
And when would that borrowing happen?
May of this year.
So, two months from now. And what are their interest rates right now?
They're around that ballpark, and we're going to bring to you the bond resolution with details on the cap of what the terms are going to be on April 2nd.
So, right now, they're 3.5 or thereabouts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, I think part of the reason, the idea of being conservative in estimates and trying to sort of keep expectations lower is the fact that there could be unforeseen things that may occur. For example, right now, we're at the interest rate we projected. I think we're in a rising interest rate environment, which means that interest rates could go up higher than we expect, and we may be paying that higher interest rate for 30 years, which has tremendous costs when you add it up year after year. So, I think that is part of the issue. I do appreciate the fact the school board came in with a very modest increase, as Mr. Webb said. And I certainly appreciate the working relationship that I think we all have with the school board and you in particular, and the superintendent. But I think that is part of the reason for conservatism, and some on council, is that there can be unforeseen things, there could be cost overruns in some of the many capital improvement projects we're doing right now, or even interest rates. Everything goes according to plan, except interest rates are higher, and they're half percent higher for 30 years.
Right.
Which can really add up.
While I'm here, can I give an answer to a question from Mr. Z?
Yes.
On the deferred comp, the cost is $45,000, a little over $45,000, to increase it from $5 to $20 per paper.
Okay.
It's only for the city employees, not the schools.
So, also, Mr. Shields, you were saying the impact, I think, for an average homeowner is $634, is that right?
That's right.
So, I think one thing we ought to keep in mind as well is that property taxes and local taxes are not deductible after $10,000, at least on your federal returns. So, in fact, the impact could be much higher to an average taxpayer here. I think the tax amount for the average homeowner will be $9,300. I think what I saw on one of your slides is approximately nearly $10,000. And that's the cap for deduction of federal, on federal income tax for state and local tax. So, I think the impact of increases here in the city can be beyond what we say, quote as "impact," because people will not be able to deduct things they used to be able to deduct last year. deduct last year on their taxes anymore. And so I think the impact, I think a better phrase may be the amount of tax increase for an average homeowner, but the impact could be much higher. If, for example, you're also paying state income taxes, then you may not have, be able to deduct any of those. If you're at already $10,000 in your property tax, it may be that your state income tax is totally not deductible anymore, which could impact, I'm talking about the legislation.
Sure.
So I think it's important to just kind of remember the bigger picture on things. You mentioned Washington, Weston-Lincoln maybe as a project that may get delayed. So is that the one with Fairfax County as well? Like, we're kind of working with Fairfax on that?
No, that one is Weston-Great Falls, and so we would keep that one on track, but Weston-Lincoln is the one that we're eyeballing.
Great, that's good. I didn't want to delay anything with our neighbors, since it's really important to have cooperation at this time in particular. If the schools came in at the 2% number, what would that be, the impact on the tax rate?
As a rule of thumb, for both the general government and the schools, every percent increase of their budget is a penny on the tax rate. So, and the reason for that is their budget's about 40 million, our budget is about 40 million, and so that's the way the math works. So if the school board came in at 2%, it would be about .9 cents on the tax rate.
So you're proposing, was it 5.5%?
That's correct.
So it'll be approximately 4.4, 4.5% or 4.6%?
Correct.
I'm sorry, 4.6 cents would be what the proposal would be with a 2% increase?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, let me see what else I've got here. How about next year? Are there other things, kind of uncertainties that you feel are lurking next year? You know, Womata, we don't know what's going on with Womata. There are other things out there that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Well, you know, the one that comes first to mind is anytime you're doing a capital project, there are unforeseen conditions in a project. And, and so that's just, that's risk anytime you're doing major capital projects. On the legislative front, the Womata situation, we think is going to be stable in FY '20, but is going to then jump up again in FY '21, based on Womata's forecast. So that's going to continue to be a rising cost for the city. In terms of overall economic forecasts, we read Stephen Fuller's regional report on a monthly basis to get what the leading indicators are for the regional economy. The leading indicators are strong for the, for the regional economy and for the national economy. All those indices are positive. But we do know from, from the past that they can turn rather quickly. We are in, right now, the 104th month of the recovery, or thereabouts, 105th month. And the longest recovery in the city, in the nation's history is 120 months of economic growth, quarter after quarter, in a recovery phase. So no one can tell the future, but an economic slowdown is sometime in our future, and when that will be, I think probably most experts are saying is not in the next 12 months, but then after that, potentially so.
And Womata, tell us a little bit more, if you could briefly, about the increase you think is coming in 2020 or '21?
Well, let me look to Ms. Mester to provide us with information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Shields and Mayor. That's dealing with the current state-approved bonds to cover a lot of capital that the state's been bringing. So it's being referred to as the funding cliff, when some of those bonds go away. What the General Assembly just approved does do a third year out of the pre-a-federal match money for 50 million, so that is covered, but then we're going to have another spike of capital if the state capital funding that's separate from what was just taken action of doesn't get funded. All indication is that the General Assembly's willing to entertain that next session, but there's no guarantee, and so we know we have a spike of capital expenses that we may lose state money for.
Okay. All right, unless anyone else has got anything, of course.
There's just one thing I really want to make sure that we're all keeping in mind, and that is that last November, the voters voted 64 to 36% yes on a school bond, knowing full well, with our financial models, that they were expecting a 6-cent tax increase. And the big concern and the big conversation that we had leading up to that budget, or that referendum vote, was could the operating budget be constrained? Could we keep the operating budget within the organic growth of the city? And I think tonight with this budget, you presented that answer as yes, that you have kept the operating budget well within the organic growth. And that is something that should be applauded. And I think that 64, the other thing is our registrar got an award this week for having the highest percentage of voters in the state. Is that right, Mr. Shields? Yes?
I believe that's correct.
Yes, so all the cities and counties in the state, the City of Falls Church had the highest percentage of voter turnout last November. So in addition to the fact that 64% voted for this referendum, knowing that it was going to be a 6-cent tax increase, that we also had a lot of voters come out, more so than anybody else in the state. So I feel like as we go forward, I just really want to thank you for keeping our operating budget within the organic growth and being true to what our voters voted for last November.
During this season, when the vice mayor and I seem just, you know, destined to be sparring with one another, I would just observe that, you know, I always tried to communicate during the campaign on the referendum that it was the dollar figure that we were aiming for, not a specific tax rate increase number, as I think as the manager indicated, that $2.4 million is in the budget. I always saw the 6-cent number as a worst-case scenario, and believed that, you know, it certainly would be no more than that, and might hopefully be less than that, and if other things fell in our favor, spending restraint, local and national economic trends, we would be mindful of the need to retain capacity for potential future tax rate increases, and not essentially, you know, fire all of our bullets in this first year that we're undertaking these very ambitious capital projects. So, you know, I remember discussions, apparently early November and December meetings, people came out of them with different impressions, but my impression was always that, you know, we would make an effort to try to keep below 6% if we could, making no promises. We wanted the voters to understand that the worst case would be a 6-cent tax increase. I do agree with the vice mayor that, you know, overall, the budget is, you know, it's very good, largely because there is considerable restraint being shown, especially on the city side, and also by the schools. And most importantly, to answer the question that is usually posed to me, if we're doing all this economic development, why is my tax, why are my taxes not going down? And the answer to that is always, you know, if we weren't doing this economic development, your taxes would be going up at a faster rate. And this budget shows that in, you know, the most clear way of any budget that I've seen since I came here in 2012.
All right. Well, Taya, we've got miles to go before we sleep. This will be discussed many more meetings, as you saw on the chart. Unless anyone else has got anything pressing to say, I think why don't we call it an evening as relates to this topic? And thank everyone for coming out and for the good work you've done, and we look forward to working with all the concerned parties to get this done. So thank you. Why don't we move on to, I guess we don't have any business, we don't have any business on the agenda other than this, do we? All right, that's good. How about business not on the agenda? Anything anybody wants to talk about? All right, standing regional, we do have some business on the agenda, Ms. Hardy, yes.
If I could just make a request. So, Mr. Shields, you mentioned, you know, intersections where council members have a chance of getting hit. If I could have another one on there, I don't actually know if this one is ours or Arlington's, but the corner where the WOD, where they're proposing kind of that new Pedbridge over Lee Highway?
Uh-huh.
That's a really, I know that many people have had this issue before, but essentially right turns, heading, I guess, south on Lee Highway. Currently, you can turn and you're just supposed to yield pedestrians. Is that our intersection, or is that Arlington's?
That's Arlington's intersection.
Okay. To the extent we can influence them on, actually just modifying it, I know that the Pedbridge will help, but that's years away. If they can just make it a no right turn on red, and there's something we can do with that signal, but I was nearly hit again there. And I know that I'm not the first who've actually complained about that, because people just want to turn, not knowing that there's pedestrians in the sidewalk, even though pedestrians should have the right of way there.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Mr. Lickenhouse?
Just two quick things. Mr. Shields, were you able to talk to my neighbor about the intersection of Oak and Seton?
I beg your pardon, I have not, but I will do so.
Okay, I'm going to keep following up.
Yes, please do, but I will.
Okay. And then a second question. There've been a number of discussions about an analysis or a matrices on proffers for Falls Church compared to other jurisdictions. Well, we have that ready by the time we kickstart some of the development discussions again related to Broad and Washington, Founders Row, and certainly the campus site. I know we've got a lot on our plate, but...
We're assembling the data right now. It is a little bit sensitive, so I'm not sure whether that's something we could discuss in closed session, but I'm not sure if we can. Let me get back with you in terms of the timing of that. You know, when you're in the midst of sort of pitched negotiations, that could be kind of an inject into those that we might need to be thoughtful about.
That's fine. I just want to make sure we have some general understandings of the lay of the land, and if it's an analysis and we need to have offline, that's fine. But I certainly want to inject into that conversation in light of comments here, as well as comments at the council retreat, how affordable housing, ADUs fit into our matrix of voluntary concessions and proffers here within the city. Again, especially in light of some of the larger commercial developments that we have on the horizon.
All right. Any discussion or comment about, or standing regional committees, council liaison reports? Okay, any council member comments that have not yet been made? Mr. Z?
I want to commend the city for having unusually high-quality leaf mulch compost this year.
Well, that's good.
And you can tell, because on Sunday, you have every landscape outfit north of Virginia lined up, so you can't get to it.
Getting free mulch.
Mr. Shields?
Revenue opportunity.
Oh, yeah, I know, we should charge for that.
The things that I got, it looks really, really nice. Smells really, really nice.
Is there a leaf mulching day? I know that the budget's tight in the public works budget, but...
Let me get back with you on whether we're having that day and when it is.
All right. Any other council member comments?
Let's just hear for those green and white festive lights in the 100 block of West Broad. They are awesome looking.
They look good.
They really look great. Thanks to everybody here who's agitated for those, and Ms. Whitman and the EDO, who I think has suffered longer and harder about those lights than any human ever ought to have to. I assume that we'll be hearing information about services for Mr. Kalin, and you'll relay those to us and convey the appropriate, you know, information. Thanks.
All right. Is there anything else we want to talk about tonight? If not...
Mayor, move to adjourn these proceedings.